All right, seven o'clock, I'd like to call the April twenty seventh, twenty twenty two. So appeals we need to order. Mr. Sherman, my right is Tom Manning, Secretary, he is right as fully credits the bus chairman. Bill Munster is also a member, he will be sitting tonight for Scott Rosado, who's our president. Our new member, also members Bruce McCharm, and our other also members, Doug Smith, will be sitting for the vacant position. As a result of business, just yours move out of town. Excuse me, at the appropriate time, the secretary will verify the man that are required by statute. Are in order when you see does that were set to proceed and the application made their presentation. Oh, also, I'm sorry, Tom had already called the post office also present. At the end of the app with the presentation, we will ask questions. And to see if there's anything in the file from any of the signations, your correspondence. At that point, the applicant repartee negative comments may be made or add anything to it. That they forgot, and at the end of the public hearing, the applicant may stay. Typically, tarred rich research that same evening, even though we have sixty five days by century. But at that point in time, no further comments could be made. Cell phones, if you have them, if you put them on silent, all appreciated. And Mr. Manning, where we stand, oh, brochure, new alternate member. During the open public hearing, when we come comes sound questioning, you can question the applicants. When we close the public hearing, a bit of a council that you're also that's not sitting. Should not participate in a discussion, and you can't, of course, it's all the ratios and a vote because.
Am I able to vote tonight, or do you have enough of a contingent? They have enough people.
Yeah, there's one, two, three, four, five. So we have five, but during the public hearing, when it comes down to questioning, you can question the applicants if you have things in your mind.
Okay.
When we close the public hearing, you cannot participate in discussion, and obviously, okay. What I tried to do was rotate the alternates around, but I'll break you in.
Okay.
The wild mirror in the corral. Okay, Tom, how about mailings?
Okay, just to start out, I want to progress through from the twelfth of January. Just to give a scenario of how we're getting here, because it's a little bit confusing. In on the meeting of January twelfth, two thousand twenty two, under new business, it was noted in the minutes. Central Hall carports will be resubmitted. Then in at the ZBA meeting on March twenty third, twenty twenty two, ZBA twenty two. Meeting minutes of January twelve, twenty twenty two were approved, so. It talked about reducing the side west yard ten. To zero feet in east yard setback. And feet to zero feet, so some confusion, I think. Discussions earlier, you know, just not knowing whether one of those was going to go away, so. Mark, could you? This is talking about the west and the east.
I think it's best if the applicants address it.
Let them address it, okay. Let's see. So I got through the minutes of the meeting, and I found, I think they're in order. Wanted to run this by everybody, and I've never done this before. But the notice nine, one, eight, D, notice by mail, talks about notifying owners of properties within a hundred and fifteen feet. The subject property blah, 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 by mailing a copy of the legal notice. Not which is required, not less than ten calendar days, but not more than thirty days prior to the scheduled public hearing. So. This started out on the twenty, let's see, what did I say? We met on March twenty third. And there was a reason why, let me read this. So on the twenty third of March, we met, and the mailings had not been mailed at the time. So we continued the public hearing and jump in it if I'm speaking. So we just continued the public hearing to the thirteenth, I think, which was the next April thirteenth. So. One of the questions I had. Only, only those who had the calendar, just to make sure that I was. So the twenty third was on Wednesday, obviously. The date of the mailings was on the, were on the twenty fifth, so that was after. And counting, if you count from the date of the mailings. Five, six, seven, six days to the thirty first. And then seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight.
Thirteenth was the last meeting.
Oh, that, okay, so if you can, we continued.
It was continual on the thirteenth, we opened, we continued and had the public meeting, or the public hearing. The applicant wanted to postpone again to this date, because there were only four members available on the thirteen.
I wanted to make sure that that came out, because that's important. So for the record, I reviewed the mailings, and I took these home and moved them over. And if anybody wants to look at them, but I believe they're in order. So.
Let's proceed.
To proceed, sorry for the long winded.
We're good to go.
So far as.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Greg Fettis with Fettis Engineering, an office at seventy Essex Street, Mystic, Connecticut. Here tonight, representing the owners of Central Hall, and Brian Navarro is representative of the owner. And Peter Spring Steel is the architect that worked on the project. Doing the design of the carports. So we were here, I think we submitted maybe May, June of twenty twenty one, an application or similar setup. We had two, we initially had four extra carports, two of them ended up being interfering with the sewer easement. That cuts through from Pearl Street through the back of the properties here. So we eliminated two right off the bat, and then. We came in, actually, we modified our application and our site plan and and came before the board, I think in July of twenty twenty one. With ten, I'm just gonna flip this over real quick. This is the application of the drawing that was submitted, and you guys acted upon back, back in July, twenty twenty one. So that had two additional ones, and at the time, I think it was Mr. Menzer might have asked, are you willing to? Kind of reduce the project at all, and at that point, we were already taken too off, and we weren't really in a position to reduce on the spot. So we kind of took our lumps and got denied that evening. And, oh, then we kind of went back to the drawing board and decided. Further reduction. This is the application before you and the site plan before you, that we removed the two here, which eliminated the variances to the north. We did get a party line agreement with Nine Gravel Street, which kind of eliminates, and I think this was one of the questions, it eliminates the variance requests on the east side. So we narrowed it kind of down to one variance on the west side for these five covered carports. And just to, so that's kind of a summary, these initially twenty spaces back here were allotted. And there's a little parking narrative, just over the history, back in twenty twelve. Fifteen of these spaces were allotted to Central Hall, and then five, what's called the Tiff Building, which is the building. At front, Sun West Main Street, basically is pretty close to zero lot line on the front on West Main. Obviously, everything is at at grade there, so there's no. Parking access, there's no room for parking in front of the buildings, there's no room to go underneath the building, so forth. So. And then I think we were also before you guys, prior to July, for this little storage building here, which kind of shuffled the parking around a little bit. We did get all of our site plan approvals for that, so we're kind of down to nineteen spaces, fifteen of them, which are allotted to Central Hall. Well, this is kind of one of the. Final tidying up of Central Hall, and we're getting ready to put the the units on the market over there, and we're working with the town on some other things at the gravel street pump station and so forth. But anyway, we're here tonight for eight. Three. Carports on this side and five on this side. To offer some covered parking for at least eight of the residents over at Central Hall. Otherwise, the spaces here, the spaces over on the pump street, pump station, parking area are all uncovered. So we were able to reduce it, I think, you know, eliminate the two up here, get rid of that variance, get a party line agreement on this side. But as for hardship, and and I, this was part of the application, we wrote a little letter, a hardship explanation. Which talks about the uniqueness of the lot. Frontage, main frontage on West Main, and a very narrow fifteen foot wide access point on Pearl Street. To an area that was always designated as parking. We're just trying to get some some bit covered. So that the lot's clearly unique. I don't think there's any other lots. Kind of exactly like this one. Most of them don't have access. Behind them, let's see. Oh, there's other, you can see from, at least, this is just a small portion of downtown, you can see. You know, zero lot lines for like carpet hound, zero lot lines on the structure. That we're sharing a property line with, and then, you know, also the the buildings to Pearl Street and forty six West Main. Kind of everything is, it's just common downtown that you have a very. What makes downtown 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 that there is setbacks that are that are very low. Talked about West may not have a direct access, and the parking lot is access from Pearl Street, which is unique. I think that's kind of the gist of the hardship, Peter can go over the. Application as part of this too, so. See, did that get approved last time? Okay, you don't vote on it, okay, so yeah, that's, any questions regarding the site plan? You can save them all for the end, or you can ask. Have Peter go, okay.
Evening, Professor Steel Architect, five star street listed. This three D drawing kind of gives you better perspective of what's going on in three dimensions. The Pearl Street entrance is shown right here, this is the existing Tiff Building. So West, West Main Street is out here. This is the storage structure that we got approved a couple of years ago. So that's, that structure has not been constructed yet, but it's been approved. We've been to the historic commission with all this over the last couple of years, we've gone back and forth, and they've seen this rendition, and they are in favor of. So here's the area where we decided we're offered to get rid of two covered parking bays. Now, on that, that's the north side of the property, so now there's some relief there to the neighbor's property. One of the other issues that came up in our last meeting was the idea of or the concern of drainage from a roof, especially along this property one here. So what we're proposing to do is to do what's called a Yankee gutter, essentially, you hide the gutter behind the eve. It's not hanging out over their property, and we're catching all the water and diverting it onto our property, so there's nothing going on to the neighboring property. Underneath these carports, it's crushed stone materials, so it's, so that water will be fed to that pervy surface. And so essentially, the area that's roofed is. And we're going to send all that water to the area that's beneath the roof. Also, you see that on this parking structure here, there's two bays here, there's a third bay here. In the middle here, we have a walkway, covered walkway that leads you to the path that goes back to Central Hall. There's a gable on the end of that, it's going to have, you know, some sort of identifier on there. So when you come out of Central Hall, you can see where that parking area is. Well, you are with that back driveway area, but you can see all the way to Central Hall from this point right here. So essentially, that's what we're proposing, happy to take your questions. Bill.
Can we talk about the explanation of the hardship? Can you expand on that a little bit, maybe the details in your letter? The hardship is not, is not created by you. Follow my, my, my direction here, what we were going to talk about. Why is there hardship? Expand on a little bit more than what you said earlier.
Well, so the, this area. Has long been designated as parking. So. Way parking is set up is this mile away, two way aisle way, which basically is here twenty four feet. And then. Here, which is twenty four feet, we're kind of stuck with our entrance, which is fifteen feet wide, so it's really one way. You know, there's, there's, I think there's a mirror up there that shows whether or not there's a car coming or not, but. You know, it's only twenty, twenty nineteen spaces, it's going to be nineteen. There's not a lot of conflict there. But so, given the the width. Here, and the, and kind of the restricted width here. At twenty four feet needs to end up in the middle, and the parking on either side, well, that pushes the parking. Who, and the parking's approved already, there's no other way to configure it, or otherwise, you would be. You would have parking kind of where the aisle way is, and your access would be around. So I think that's kind of the uniqueness of of the property. And again, I think it's a unique use back there. It would, I guess, be nice if it was more consistent throughout, because then maybe parking wouldn't be such an issue downtown. But it's very limited of. Parking. That's why there's a parking study and so forth ongoing with the town. But so that's, that's kind of the uniqueness of the property. That twenty four feet is driving. It's a requirement by the town.
Conforming with the setback might make the parking situation a little less safe.
Well, it would, it would, it would eliminate mostly likely half of the parking, which would cause. You know, kind of other hardships separate of our property. You know, parking along Pearl Street or, you know, resident, you know, conflicting down there, so.
Also bear in mind, we're not exceeding a lot coverage, allow a lot, so we do have, we are have the right to have this much lot cover.
Considerably less, we're allowed to have sixty five percent coverage, and we're at forty, forty nine point one.
I remember the questions.
What?
You just explained on the twenty four foot requirement there, would that, is that in the town regs?
That's a town of, I want to say it's the road standard, but it's, yeah, two way traffic is twenty four feet wide. I'm not sure if it's a zoning regs, I know it's probably in the subdivision regs, I'm guessing it's in zoning as well as the.
Driving, it's.
If I don't show twenty four, they call me, they call me on it so many times, so.
I don't know who, who would answer this one. You talked about pervious surfaces on that underneath the the cupboard, right, that's going to be what, crushed stone or something? And the twenty four foot, is that paved? The twenty foot section, or is that going to be crushed stone too?
The twenty, the twenty four down the middle is paved.
Paved, yeah, it just the way it ended out, yeah, the way it ended. Oh, Brian Navarro. In Money Point Lane in Stonington, actually, but the, the. The, I guess, the way the parking lot was, and they required us to keep it that way, there was, and you know, more, I'm, I'm the farthest thing from an engineer, so Greg can maybe tell you this. But they, we had a certain amount of paved parking, a certain amount of of gravel space there, and they made us basically keep it that way. So we had a certain amount of drainage on there, but basically, the way it basically looks is, and I'm not sure if it was originally done this way, it's where the cars all is where the gravel is. And then we had paving in the middle there.
So the entrance from Pearl Street is paved, and then that twenty four foot strip is paved.
Exactly.
And as I look at the. The three dimensional thing, there's a fence along the east side, then all the way across, is it, is there a fire lane that goes through there? Or is that open up, or how does that work?
Yeah, so there's a fire lane that runs, it's kind of this, it curves through here like this. Okay, continues to the other property, so this section of that fence will be gated. Where they can go right through it.
But the only people supposedly going through is going to be the fire departments.
Yeah, and the fire folks have looked at it, and you know, it approved, like, tough situation, they're happy to, they can get in. With a bigger equipment this way. And then they can get smaller equipment through. But they, they, they kind of agree, there's never, they're never going to get the ladder truck in and and out onto Pearl Street, so they, you know. They were okay with what we proposed.
Okay, and there's no storage. Bins or anything in these, in each of these signs?
Yes, sir.
And go, it's just straight, just a parking.
Covered parking.
And is there raised? Diminution between one bay to the other, or is that?
There's like, you can see on here, there's like a cobblestone, instead of painted, they're, they're going to be cobblestone like. The spaces.
The, just for reference, the zoning board of appeals did approve a storage shed in this location, Peter pointed out right there.
No, what I was talking about for each, each bay, understood, a lot of. Right, so sorry, the carport, they want, you know, to hang a bicycle or something like that.
That's what that's for, that they proved a lot.
Oh, that's, that's part of the deal too, then.
That's part of, yeah, Central Hall, so each unit will has, I forget, five by, five by, five by five by eight or something, yeah.
They get a little storage space in there.
And that's behind the the trash facility that you're building, right? Or, or, or is it?
Storage is here, okay. You can show on the three D where the storage is, Peter. This is the storage.
That's the storage, okay. I have one question for Tom here. You spoke about a party line agreement.
Yes, sir.
Okay, what, what's the effect of that, and how does that? Fit into the whole process?
So in this particular zoning district, the Mystic Development District, there is a section in the zoning regulations that allows two property owners to come to an agreement. And file that agreement on the town records, it says they can, but to the property line, so it's unique to this zoning district. So you showed us proof that, the Kirk Fettis showed us proof that they have that agreement, they'll fight on the land records, and that stays for. Attuning, or as long as the landowners own the land?
Yeah, I think is, well, I think unless there's an agreement between the two property owners to. I don't think one of them can just say otherwise.
No. It's an agreement to start its agreement, then it.
Well, conceivable, you could have had. A party line agreement with the property owners on the Pearl Street side, is that, but you don't have, you don't have those.
You didn't, we didn't, we weren't successful in kind of putting that together with them. We have current agreement with three gravel street. Because they already agreed for us to park there, so we, and we also have an easement. To basically walk through their parking lot to get to Central Hall, so we already had kind of this working. Relationship with free gravel, we didn't necessarily have that, and didn't, you know, we didn't, we weren't, just didn't have it, so we didn't, we didn't get it.
In this section, it's unique to the other side because the carports cross the property line. Greg, where the property line is?
Yeah, we had to, so the property line cuts right through, we did kind of a mutual party line agreement, so we said it's okay. For us to build on their property, and they said it's okay for us to build on our property, so it kind of.
Otherwise, the three gravel would have had to apply for variance as well, have it on their.
And Tom, the, um. The property owners on the Pearl Street side have been, have been, do we notified by mail, correct?
Yes, every, all the letters have been notified, but. But I just. Ask a couple of questions.
I'm almost done here, okay, so then, I think that's. Everything I have, you're good.
Now, you talked about this agreement between the two, about is budding property. You're talking about some budding property owner, it's not. I guess, what I'm trying to come to grips with a couple of things, one is, there was a mention about the fire protection and getting fire equipment in the neighborhood, I think that's critical. Do you have anything in writing from the fire department? Oh, it could be, you know, it could sway us, sway me. Won't be a problem, because. I'm envisioning putting carports in areas that are very tight, and we had a big fire down there, is. That that should be a critical thing to get. Then get, get it in writing that the fire department has a plan to get in there with these structures that aren't going to impede their equipment. I have a real problem.
Yeah, I, well, a couple of things, we did, we did, we meet with them, they did give a verbal, I don't recall that they wrote a letter on this. But we will be going back for site plan approval, and at that time, there's staff meetings and so forth, and there's formal reviews written. But I don't, I don't have a written something from them now, but I know we met on site a couple of times, you know, they're kind of very happy with. In a, you know, separate of our project here, we're also. Going to be providing some assistance for the name. Gonna be providing some assistance for the neighbor here. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're adding some fencing and taking care of some stuff to. And and giving them, I think, even a couple parking spaces allotted, so they, so it's not as like it is. I haven't been out there today, but last time I was out there was a little. Yeah, okay, so we're, we're trying to clean up not only. What we have, but also make, and and the fire department's happy that we're helping. Work on chapter ones, kind of backyard. But I can definitely get something in writing, and you could even make that a condition if you wanted.
Uh, the other question I had is. When you brought this to us last year. Well, how is this different differing from what the numbers were just?
Yeah, so we had, uh, initially, we had twelve unit carports. Uh, that were proposed back in last July, um. The public works and engineering kind of captured two of them right off the hop, so before you probably even saw it. Uh, we got rid of two that were here. Kind of on the other side of the easement, and on the end here, and so. We came to you with ten, which which included one here and one here. Uh, we got rid of those, those were, you know, uh, anywhere, I think from. I don't wanna say one point four to two point four feet away from that northern property line. Uh, so we did, we did reduce these, if, it's kind of. What we thought was a a a reasonable, reasonable request by you guys to reduce, and then a reasonable. You know, we picked these two, if we picked, we'd have to pick the whole line on this side, it would have got rid of that whole line, so. You know, we. You know, we were able to get the the property party line agreement here, and then, so we we reduced it from twelve to ten to eight. Which is what we'll hear before you. Covered parking spaces.
I might have a couple more questions.
Can I ask one more question? There's a, there's a thing labeled on. On the drawing, it's, it's got a one with a circle in it, and the drawing that's up there now.
Here?
Yeah, what is, what is that?
That's just designating one spot. Yeah, so this is, so this was one spot, one spot, and then three spots, and then this is a total of seven spots here. So there is seven here.
That is a.
That all adds up to nineteen total.
A spot where someone can put, that's part of the the.
Just won't be covered.
Central Hall part.
Yeah.
And that, and the opening there is sufficient for the, for fire trucks to get through there, someone.
It's a, it's twelve foot wide, which is, you know, half of twenty-four, it's kind of the the. I wanna say the best we could do, but the best we, the best we could do, and the fire department was in agreement, they would, they just wanna kind of get their. I don't know, I wouldn't say like pickup truck or suburban through there, which is plenty of room to do that, so.
Going back to that.
Yes.
What would it take to get them to buy into getting a plan? To to this?
Uh, just, I'll take the plan to him and. Oh, before voting?
Yeah.
I could try calling him now.
I want, I'm looking for something in writing. They signed up to, because I think it's critical.
Yeah, okay. I mean, in two weeks, the next meeting, or three weeks? I mean, I can get it before the next meeting. At that, I mean, we waited this long, we could wait two or three more weeks. And I don't, I don't want you to feel uncomfortable. Yeah.
And they are comfortable, because.
I'm confident we'll get that writing before the next meeting.
I mean, I'd rather have it in writing.
Cause I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't be here, you know, in hindsight, yes, I should have got it in writing, I might even have it, I, to be honest with you, I don't. I looked through my total file tonight and didn't see it in there, but it probably was an email, I'm guessing, if I did get something, but. Well, I'll talk to Tony tomorrow and get something in a formal letter, that's what the commission. Separate of, you know.
Please, your separate questions, Tom, with this party line agreement on the east.
That's correct.
All right, so the call, all of you voted on Paris on the west.
Correct.
That wasn't changed to.
I'm sorry?
That was a change to the call.
It will be, if it's, if someone makes a motion, it will be. Yeah, you just won't mention it in the approval.
So if, if we're at status quo, the way it is now, it's an open parking lot, okay? And I don't know how many, the spaces are informal, I don't, they're not marked, I don't believe it since when I.
So we got, right now, I think we have signs up in front of each spot, so they're. I mean, they're all designated for certain. There's nineteen total.
Okay, so if everybody's parked there. Now. Is this give more access to the fire department than if yet everybody was parked in there?
I think it formalizes their access. I don't know that it changes it, I think it formalizes.
But they can, until we sign me by sloppy parking back there now.
As well as some other, uh. There's some other stuff going on in this area that I think might be on this side of it, on the. After one side, so I don't know a hundred percent.
No fence. You can get through there now, there's no fencing there with.
There is, there are some obstacles, I think, wheel stops and so forth, that. We're gonna have to tidy up as part of this.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You have a camera for? Camera for, cam, see him?
Oh, yes, I can talk about the cam real quickly. I mean, really, there's the only wheel, well. Oh, the drainage would be a change, uh, but we're really just taking that drainage that's hitting the gravel underneath. Piping it down off the roof back into the gravel underneath, so there's no, there's no real change, let me just see if I wrote. And I described it, um, there's no outside storage and trash recyclables. Yeah, there's no changes to any of the other items. We are in a flood zone, eleven. She, I know changes that my first impact.
Did I hear that the call is, is it's currently stated is to reduce the side west yard setback from ten feet to zero. And reduce the side east yard setback from ten feet to zero, is that correct?
Just the west side.
Just the west side, so. So we'll have to make.
So.
Somehow make a note, because this call is not.
Just modify it, when you, when a motion.
Has modified. Okay, so it's just the west side.
Do we have any comments for any of the town agencies?
There was a comment. It was attached. Went to the Wednesday, April twenty seventh. And it says, it's from an email from Leo Roche. Thursday, April seventh, two twenty-two, to Tom Zanaree. ZBA point two dash zero one thirty-six West Main Street. To whom it may concern, my name is Leo Rose, the owner of Irish Eyes, Harp and Hound. My only concern is that the rear of my building is the applicant's location of a bike rack. Which is close to the property. In case of an emergency, my second form of egress from the Harp and Hound is at the rear of the building. And where the bike rack is now proposed, and potentially could have struck customers, staff. Exiting the property, thank you, Leo.
Did you address that?
Well, you do have a bike rack right here, it's next to the stairway, so it looks like there's an egress. Right here, and on the other side of it, doesn't look like it's blocking doorway.
We could. Certainly, you know, talk to him about that. Sure he's comfortable.
Yeah, we have to do a calculation on our site plan anyway, for number of, like, bases. I'm sure that that'll get addressed, like, like plan level.
So that's our parking space he's speaking about.
No, these are, these are just a bike rack that we. We had a fine spot for it, I think, when, I think it's left from the, I think it's probably left over from the uh. Storage shed application, to be honest with you. So we showed it.
It's just previously approved, like that.
Oh.
So. The bike practice for the owners of the Congress, correct?
The bike rack is, no, the bike rack is is a requirement of your zoning regulations, as in in your parking regulations. So you, like, there's a parking requirement is up there in the top right corner. They calculated a certain percentage of parking spaces, I think. Ten percent or something, so if we have twenty spaces, you need two parking spaces for bikes. Uh, it it's something that will work out with, I think you you know the owner. Yeah, their neighbors will work that out, but it's gonna be taken care of at site plan, and it was previously approved, so. You know, I think you guys are covered regarding that comment.
And, you know, obviously, we'll make sure that the.
Yeah, we're not gonna block it.
There's not a problem with the exit.
Anything else about?
Yeah, we have on, uh, March twenty-third, the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, reviewed a copy of this, and they had no comments.
Any real, so any questions?
I don't think so, I think we would, uh. We prefer a condition of, of, you know, regarding the fire marshal, however, you know, if. We need to extend to make everyone feel comfortable about it, we would be okay with extending.
And he else? Okay, we'll call.
There's nobody on.
Your question?
There's no attendees on Zoom.
Okay, so, alright, so it's, uh, seven forty-three. Public hearing is closed. That round to discussion.
I think the applicant is is, uh, heard our concerns over the past eighteen months, and, uh. They've modified their plan, and, um. And just dealing with the one side yard setback on the west, it's consistent with the neighborhood, I I I. I think now is the time to, uh, go forward with it, I think Tom's concern is is extremely appropriate. I I I I'm wondering whether that's within our purview, whether we should be making that call on that tonight. But, let's, uh, let's, let's hear more from, uh, Mr. Krabs.
I don't, I don't think they're ready to vote on this until everything's put in order. I mean, what I hear, everything's not finished yet. Once it's finished, then you can vote on it. It's just my opinion.
I'm curious, what what do you think is finished?
Some of the things they brought up, the concerns they brought up. Uncontested, this and that, everything else. Fire trucks going through there. You know, that place could burn down again. And you gotta be able to get fire trucks in there.
I have a question whether whether that's a purview of the of the ZBA at all. Our purview is whether or not there's a hardship, and whether or not a variant should be granted. The purview of the fire marshal is whether or not. It can be built, um, with his approval and and whatever else, but. I think you have to rely on the other branches of the local government that. Have the purview in that area to do their job, and we should do our job in determining whether or not. This property warrants a variance. Seems to me that, um. Writing of a variance on the west side in this situation would be, uh, reasonable. And I think we we could vote on it tonight.
I tend to agree with Floyd in that. Two weeks, what was it, maybe, may, third or something. I don't think we're until May eleventh to make a final decision. To all lay Tom's concerns, they gotta push the bar back. Just having a over here now, so I'm not, so we're not hurting anything. So. This is, you know, since this, if we make a motion to continue, there's a discussion, so may a lover.
Make a motion to continue until May eleven, second.
Brothers' session. On purpose, if I say I. Here, she never say, okay, thank you. Right, defer decisions for mail.
Yes, thank you, um, because it's an outside. Uh, whatever, outside agency, they can. New information can get introduced.
Uh, well, something they, during the public hearing, that was talked about.
So we're just gonna get that to you before the meeting.
Yes.
You can show up, but the public hearing's closed, and we listen to you deliberate.
Correct.
I I just wanna make sure, I'm looking for something in writing.
Yes, sir, yep. Yep, I'm, yeah, on the fire marshal's letterhead. Thank you.
Uh, okay, so.
Uh, there is no correspondence.
Okay, then this from March twenty-three. When you passage somewhere.
Which one is that?
March twenty-three.
Is that the one?
It's the one that says one, see, March twenty-three.
I just wanna see, where is it both? I'd like to. Clar- put a clarification in. Where it says correspondence. James Stevens read a letter of resignation from Richard Fitzgerald, who resigned from the zoning board of appeals. I'd like to add, because. Like to have the reason, really. It's not because he's disinterested, you know, you know, I don't know if anybody knew, anybody knew that I accept. Myself and then. I think that warrants.
I think that was in his letter of resignation. Motion to, uh, acceptance.
Yeah. Make a motion to, to accept the minutes.
Discussion on a favor.
Uh, no, was that the, was it the April thirteenth?
That was a March.
That was March twenty-third, man.
Oh, okay, the rap, I'm sorry. Motion for April thirteen.
Make a motion to accept the minutes, May fifteenth.
Okay, discussion, on fair, I.
I abstained, I wasn't, I wasn't there.
So that's four eyes and more than. And it's a pass, uh, your business.
There, uh, new business, we have one new application, uh, Sam's Food Stores for Drive-Thru, and. That was, uh, you will see it. On May twenty-fifth.
Okay, so, so, this will not be on the bill on.
No.
Okay. Okay.
Here is that, is that down by the subway, is that somebody subway?
It's a legislation. Yes, Cardinal.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Okay, can you give up the hashish store? Okay, staff report.
Uh, none.
Hey, any real support? There you go, motion of reserve. On favor, I. So, we are at, uh, seven fifty.
Are you keeping the original?
Yeah, we have them in the file.
You have the copy.
I won't, I won't be here on the twenty-fifth, so.